Good afternoon, everyone. Sorry. Good afternoon, everyone. I would like to welcome all of you to our board meeting. To access translation, please click on the globe icon below or at Dejawn. You can go to the corner of the room to get translation. We are heading into our closed session for tonight. Before we do, we are here to listen to any public comment. There might be about our closed session items. The public gets two minutes for public comment per speaker. The closed session items that we're discussing tonight are conference with legal counsel, conference with labor negotiators, public employee appointment, public employee discipline dismissal, release complaint, and that's it. Staff, do we have any public comment?
Yes, we do. Our first public comment is Sonia Perez.
Good afternoon, school board members. My name is Sonia Perez and I am a first grade teacher at Siege Elementary. I'm here to speak about our school and the need to be able to get our items from our classrooms. When they first discovered asbestos at our school site, the decision was made to close our building. We all had questions on what would happen to all of our educational items as well as our personal items. As we got ready for a new school year, our classrooms were empty, but we had chairs and tables from our old school building. Next, the permitium boards were moved over into our classrooms, which also came from our school site. And to be specific, it came from one of the rooms that was being worked on over the summer. But yet, there is no word of when we will be able to get what we need for our students. My classroom is on the side of Pachero away from where all the construction was going on. And I'm still wondering how our classrooms were affected if everything was packed up and stored away in tubs in a locked closet. Currently, years' worth of dedication and hard work is sitting in our closets while we are at a different school site, attempting to make it a functional classroom. We are on day fifty-five of the school year, and I don't think we have finished putting our classrooms together. We are still getting packages that were supposed to arrive at the beginning of the school year. We had to put in more time and money into setting up our classrooms because we started with nothing. It is frustrating to see that we do not have access to materials that are essential to our curriculum. We are teaching Xern without manipulatives when our materials are sitting in our closets. I have spent time and money attempting to build my phonics group centers when all those materials are in my closet. There are many items that we hold that are not replaceable. You are causing a great stress on teachers and staff constantly thinking when we will get what belongs to us in our learning environment. I urge you to hear our voice and understand that we cannot be at our best if we do not have what we need to teach. If you can bring furniture from our old school site into this building, then you can bring what belongs to us. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Teresa Griffin.
Good afternoon. Somebody dared me to say this, but I'm gonna say I'm here on my birthday to speak to you all on behalf of Stige. I am Teresa Griffin, and I've been at Stige for most of my academic teaching career. We all understand the seriousness of this situation and the dilemma you may find yourselves in. Caution is necessary. We ask that you treat us with fairness and dignity and appreciate our desire to retrieve items over to our campus that we use in our craft to educate our students. August 2024 is not the first known knowledge of these exposures being evident at Stige. In fact, essentially, our buildings built between 1940 and 1980s were allowed to use asbestos and lead-based materials and everything that was built. Some of you came over to our temporary campus we are stuck at and asked us to give you a list of things we want from the building. But I want you to imagine this. Suppose someone came to you and said, "You have to leave your office or your home." Then you get to make a list from what you want to take from there. Would you, by memory, quote-unquote, know everything that was there? I think not. Figuring that we would be returning to the campus in August, why would we have catalog lists? Shame on me for not having a list of twenty-plus years of support, curriculum, personal items, manipulatives, arts and craft materials, movable stands, et cetera, and the list goes on. As Sonia said, you retrieve some of the things from our school. My students don't even have really workable desks where they can put their materials. And the desks are not conducive for work learning. As far as I'm concerned, you can bring me my old raggedy desk that I have that's locked and got all my personal stuff in it, and you can bring anything else that I want to be able to go over there and just tag my stuff.
Our next public comment is Sam Clear.
Good afternoon. My name is Sam Clear, and I'm the organizing chair with United Teachers of Richmond. I'm a teacher on release from Stige, and it is my eighth year in the district. I have been incredibly proud and thankful to work with Stige staff members. They selfishly and kindly give everything they have to the children and families every day. They have worked through unsafe and inhumane conditions in order to serve the community. However, they have not been given the same respect that they show our students and families. Instead of being provided with the materials they need to instruct students, they are having to solicit donations from third parties and charities. The school was closed in the summer, and it is now November. Instead of students getting to engage in hands-on learning activities with the supplies our curriculum requires, they are stuck on computers, which is not consistent with our curriculum. This treatment is inexcusable and oppressive, as well as yet another Williams violation by WCCUSD, which is causing real harm and educational loss to Stige students. The Stige educators have been removed from the old facility, but they have not been provided their instructional materials they need to impart the curriculum on Stige students. Students continue to face the same barriers and struggle in the new environment. We need to come together to show the staff members, students, and families respect at Stige and make sure that we give students the learning opportunities that they deserve. Thank you.
Our last public comment is Janine K. Joss.
Good afternoon. My name is Tangenika, and I'm the secretary at Stige Elementary. Been at Stige for over ten years now. I'm not a teacher, but I'm here to speak for the need of the things that we need in the office. Office furniture plays a critical role in creating a productive, comfortable work environment. It is more than just functional. The right furniture can create great impact on both efficiency and well-being. The importance of effective office furniture includes things like ergonomic and comfort. At Stige, I had surgery shortly after starting, and my former first principal, Dr. Moses, went through great lengths to make sure that I had the things that I needed to work comfortably. Right now, in the office, we're using adult schools trash as furniture. I have a chair that the middle school was nice enough to give us for my clerk who has back problems. Things that we also need, and I have a running list here, cume folders, health records, radios for staff. Dejawn has been nice enough to let us use some of their radios for emergency purposes, but we don't have enough for staff members. Office machines such as poster makers, laminators, a refrigerator, so we're not eating spoiled or hot wasted food for lunch. Boxes of spiritware in my office to create an environment where students and staff and our community feel like this is a school and not a prison camp where students are just bust in and bust out every day. Coats and shoes that were donated from Subaru last year for students in need whose families can't afford to buy them in the wintertime. Organized game equipment for recess that was purchased at the end of the year. Personal things of mine that are in my office. I'm currently standing here.
That concludes public comment.
Thank you, everyone, for your public comment. We will reconvene for open session at 6:30 tonight. Thank you again. Maybe it's not. Okay, I think it's good. All right. Good evening, everyone. I would like to welcome all of you to our board meeting tonight. To access translation, please click on the globe icon below or at Dejawn. You can go to the corner of the room to get materials. We are returning from closed session. After our opening procedures, the public will have the opportunity to make public comment. The board has changed the public comment format. We have opportunities on non-agenda items in person through the Zoom app and by telephone at the beginning of the meeting. Public comment will last one hour. The time allotted for each speaker is two minutes. If you are attending the meeting in person, you will need to submit a request to address the board form to indicate your desire to speak on an agenda item. After it's been turned in to staff, they are placed in the order of when they are turned in. We also call on speakers one at a time and alternating between public, comment at Dejawn, and one on Zoom. If participating via Zoom, you need to raise your hand by clicking the appropriate icon in the Zoom app or by pressing star nine if accessing the meeting by phone. No yielding to time or substitution of speakers is permitted. The public will also have the opportunity to make public comment on agenda items after the staff presentation for each discussion and action item. The public will have ten minutes per item and one minute per speaker. Due to the Brown Act, board members cannot discuss items that are not on the agenda and do not usually respond to items presented in public comment. Now, let's move to our opening procedures. First, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance. If you are willing and able, please rise.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Now, we are going to go to... Hold on one second, everyone. Okay, we are going to go to the land, labor, and body acknowledgement. The land acknowledgement staff, do we have the video ready? Thank you very much. We are now moving to the labor and body recognition. I acknowledge that the burden of environmental exploitation and systemic injustice falls upon the labor of Black and Brown bodies in the building of this country and its institutions. I remember that Black and Brown people were born and died working this land against their will for generations. Also acknowledge the continued contribution of the labor survivors over the centuries to today of all immigrant labor, including voluntary, involuntary, trafficked, forced, and undocumented peoples in the building of what we refer to as the United States. Now, I'm going to go to item B four, West Contra Costa Unified School District School Board Anti-Racist Statement. The West Contra Costa School District Board of Education is committed to the work of anti-racism, the conscious and active effort to identify, challenge, and correct racial inequities in the systems and institutions within our schools and community. Racism, explicit or implicit, stands in direct conflict to the fundamental principles of WCCUSD education. To carry WCCUSD education into the future, we recognize that we must continually renew and reflect on the roots of racism and develop new ideas to meet the times. Unjust ideas and policies and the racial inequity they produce have shaped us, our schools, and our society. We strive to uncover unconscious biases and practice anti-racism as individuals and as board members. We challenge ourselves to persist through the discomfort necessary for growth and learning, to deepen our listening and our examination of racism and oppression, and to develop a strong understanding of how our personal experiences and feelings fit into a larger picture of continual oppression. Each member of our school board individually and collectively is responsible for creating and nurturing an anti-racist learning environment where each student, staff member, and community partner is respected and a valued member of the WCCUSD community. We are uniquely positioned, and it is our responsibility to identify and dismantle racist ideas and inequitable policies in ourselves and across the district. Therefore, we commit to supporting anti-racist policies, programs, and practices for our children's education and well-being, while building strong and inclusive school communities. We commit to holding each board member accountable towards these goals and moving the work of anti-racism forward. We also commit to holding West Contra Costa Unified School District staff, students, and community to live in the standards of anti-racism in our schools. Dr. Hurst, we are now on B five, roll call.
Thank you very much, ma'am. President Smith Folds.
Good evening, everyone. Present.
Clerk Gonzalez Hoy.
Good evening, President.
Trustee Reckler.
Good evening. I am present.
Trustee Christian is absent. Trustee Phillips. Trustee Phillips is here. He is in the audience. Trustee Jorge Espinoza Jr.
Good evening. Present.
Trustee Luke Wilson.
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. We are now moving to agenda item B six, report and ratification of closed session. Dr. Hurst, is there anything to report out?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Regarding agenda item A two point three, the board voted to approve the appointment of Denise Steen as interim director of Human Resources Classified. The vote was as follows, who's unanimous with trustee Phillips absent. Regarding agenda item A two point four, in closed session, the board took action to approve a retirement agreement with a classified administrator. The roll call vote was as follows. The board voted four oh to approve the agreement with trustee Phillips absent. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone. We are now moving to... Thank you, Dr. Hurst. We are now moving to agenda item B seven, and our student performance. Ms. Catherine, this is your item.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, President Smith Folds, board members, and members of the community. Today, we have the pleasure of having Deanza High School in the house for our student performance, and I'd love to welcome up to the podium the principal, Principal Pierce, to introduce his team.
Thank you, Ms. Akastha Verprasas. Board President Smith Folds, thank you. Board Clerk Gonzalez Hoy, thank you. Dr. Hurst, thank you as well. We are honored to be invited to present our choir and have them give a performance for you all. And we're looking forward to have additional opportunities to have our VAPA students showcase their talents from Deanza High School. So I'm going to turn it over to our choir director, Mr. Joseph Sayturn. Mr. Sayturn, it's your microphone. Thank you all.
I got you. All right. Hello again. Good evening, everyone. My name is Joseph Sayturn. I am the choir director here at Deanza High School, first year teaching, so I'm truly excited. This is my first experience through my education journey, and I'm looking forward to more. This is the DA Voices from Deanza, and they are all excited to be here as well, too. We have two song selections for you this evening. The first song that we'll be singing is titled "Winter Lights," composed by Audrey Snyder. And followed by that, we have a jazz standard, "One Note Samba" by Antonio Carlos Jombe. This is the arrangement of... or by Roger Emerson. Please enjoy.
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
Thank you once again to Deanza High School. We are now moving on to item B eight, WCCUSD public comment. Members of the public are invited to speak to the board about any matter that is not otherwise on the agenda and is related to issues affecting public education in WCCUSD. Public comment will last approximately sixty minutes. The time allotted for each speaker is two minutes. Individuals wishing to speak must have a WCCUSD public comment form. Or participating via Zoom, individuals need to raise your hand. Due to the Brown Act, board members cannot discuss items that are not on the agenda and do not usually respond to items presented in public comment. Once again, public comment will last one hour at two minutes, and after one hour, if there are still comments, we would do another thirty minutes for one minute. Staff, are there public comments?
Yes, our first public comment is Diana Brown.
Hold on one second, Ms. Brown. Okay, I think you're good to go. Thank you.
I'm in, my name is Diana Brown and I'm standing in behalf of Steege Elementary School. And I have a lot of questions, no answers. And I'm just hoping that we can get this behind us and I kind of feel bad for the babies being here. We're spilt for adults. Oh, sorry. I'm, I'm just feeling so bad for the babies being here. It, I was hearing they only have two bathrooms and it kind of startles me to know that they'll put high school in front of the babies. I know they were number three. I don't know where the ball dropped at, but it's a very hurtful feeling. I'm just here to stand in the gap for the babies and the parents that's concerned. I'm totally concerned, especially with the sewage problems and then whatever else. It was very hurtful. So I just wanted to know. And I feel bad for the person who passed it, you know? And I just wanted to let you know that I'm concerned and whatever I can do to help, I'm here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next, our next public comment is Maisha Harris Gash. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening. So I just, you know, with all the toxicity in our midst, I wanted to say thank you to my administrator, Mr. Little. For the past two weeks, I've experienced a student who has been exhibiting inappropriate behavior. Of course, I always give young people an opportunity to make a better choice and better decision. And so this young male for two weeks in a row chose to exhibit actions that were attempting to be it intimidate, threaten, or harass me. And so, you know, I took this to Mr. Little first time. You know, he did progressive discipline. I'm okay with that. Write Ms. Gash a letter of apology for your behavior. Unfortunately, this week, the young person decided to exhibit some of the same behavior. And so I went to Mr. Little. It's like, hey, this is what happened. You know, some people know that I've been through some things in this district and I have a zero tolerance for that type of inappropriate behavior, but I just wanted to praise and Mr. Little for being proactive when I came to him about the situation with the student. Because it's really, you know, good and nice to know that you have an administrator who listens to you, not just hears what you're saying, but listens to you and takes the appropriate action. Because we as educators, like we're in the trenches every day, day in and day out. We are in close proximity with our students day in and day out. And like I always say, I don't hold grudges against kids. I understand that they're young people and they're trying to navigate this world. But there's also the part where to, you know, just to support the educator who were there every day and y'all know me, I am ten toes down for my kids. But also need them to understand that I'm ten toes down for myself. And when I give you an opportunity to make a better decision, that's what I really need you to do is make the better decision. So like I said, I just wanted to say out loud, and I told Mr. Little, he has no idea I'm talking about him tonight. But I just wanted to say out loud that I appreciate him.
My next public comment is Alon Harrison.
Good afternoon, boy. Good evening. Dr. Hurst, I had talked to you last board meeting about what the needs were for the black children. And you came and assured me that we were gonna have it. Your staff talked to me. And there again, for a whole two weeks went by and Kwanzaa is next week and we have not got reached out to, no one has talked to us. When we did get communication, it was on something totally different than what we were asking for so that we can plan in partnership with the district to ensure that, like our board president said, that parents are engaged early and often. And that's not happening. Y'all staff pointed out, your staff pointed out that we were supposed to be getting certain things that was on the presentation I sent you. But it's still not clear, like in April, we're supposed to have an HBCU tour. We haven't met about that. The parents don't know about that. We're supposed to have an honor ceremony. The counselors don't know how the students are going to be selected. These are just small issues, but to a bigger issue that we are not being engaged so we can be involved in our children's education. Data shows that parent involvement improves children's education. So please support us in getting our parents involved with OASO office. And also we would like to schedule some time with you before you leave to meet with you and share with you some of our concerns and maybe you can help us do some future development for the people that will be here when you leave. And then also, Ms. Board Trustee Folds, we are not on the agenda for a, a, you know, not a comment, but for our, for our five minutes we get, and we didn't get the rubric to sign up for every board meeting that we wanted to speak that they gave us before. So I didn't get a chance to inform you all that we did have a presentation for this evening because I didn't see ASAP on the agenda to do our presentation. And I'm complete right now. My time is up. Thank you.
Ms. Harrison, you're on here.
I'm sorry.
You're on the agenda for standing reports.
Oh, it's at the bottom. Okay.
It's, it's UTR and it's you. And it looks like, if I remember what Ms. Rosa said, is that you signed up for everyone.
Yes, I did.
So you're on, you're, you're on here.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Our next public comment is Christine Hatcher. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening, Board President Smith Folds, members of the Board, Superintendent Hurst, and members of the community. My name is Christine Gant Hatcher and I'm speaking tonight as a member of the WCCA Executive Board, the representative body for our district's administrators. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight and express support for Principal Malcolm Norrington. WCCAA is concerned about recent accusations suggesting that Principal Norrington acted counter to the interests of his students. While we may not always agree with or fully understand every decision a leader makes, Principal Norrington has a proven record as a strong advocate for his school and students. These allegations simply do not align with his values or his track record. I urge the community to consider the facts as reported by multiple news outlets, which confirm Principal Norrington's actions were neither nefarious nor in violation of district policy. Superintendent Hurst, in his statement at the October twenty-fourth board meeting, clarified that the investigation was initiated by his office after receiving information about possible policy violations. Keeping in mind Principal Norrington's dedication to our students and the school community, I implore us all to please, let's allow the review process to proceed thoroughly and objectively. I thank you for your time.
Her next public comment is Alamo Brown.
I'd like to say good evening, Board. Rodney Alamo Brown, a community advocate here in the city of Richmond, California. When I is replaced with we, even illness becomes wellness. The community at large gave an event last Saturday in which a numerous, numerous people were invited, including the superintendent, including the Area Two trustee, including the board president. However, they were no-shows. But Demetrius Hoya, I have to salute you, sir, for coming to the meeting and taking the barrage of questions that were answered, that were asked by the community at large. Unfortunately, as you all know, we're dealing with a serious issue concerning Steege. And I'm sure those of you, the folk in back of me, who come and speak in greater length about that. Now, we saw Proposition Two get passed yesterday, which was a wonderful thing. However, our request is that those monies that may be distributed to the district go immediately as matching funds to Steege to get rebuilt. Now, I don't think that's a tall order to ask. However, there will be a resolution that will be brought forward to the board to be signed, or for you all to be voted upon. We ask that you sincerely put this on as an agenda item so we, as a community, can have a discussion in moving forward with comparable solutions. God bless you all. Good night.
Our next, our next public comment is Tanetta Thompson. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening. Thank you to Board Member Phillips for your support in having Norrington removed as principal of El Cerrito High School. Right now, it's the kids that are suffering because of this illegal investigation and no one is here to support us. We write, protest, and speak at the board meetings and have evidence to support the bias, discrimination, and retaliation as opposed to what the speaker just said before us in support of Norrington from Norrington, Delion, and district employees. But it's like those that are within are out to punish our kids because we all supported our coach. This district is so focused on investigating black football players if they broke rules that the district is actually breaking state law. California Education Code Section four eight two zero two, eight four point two expressly states that if a school district elects to undertake an investigation pursuant to subdivision C of Section four eight two oh four point one, the governing board of the school shall, which is mandatory, adopt the policy regarding the investigation of a pupil to determine whether the pupil meets the residency requirements before giving that information to a private investigator. Did you all know that on September twenty-sixth, Norrington called a football player into his office and asked him where he lived, how many cars were at his home, the type of entrance, and that he would be making a home visit to verify his address? Did you know that on October twenty-first, a district employee had the ECH staff access registration for JV players? Dustin, the investigator, then contacted the parents, asking them about their address in clear violation of the education code. NCS does not apply to ninth graders on JV, so the district should have never gotten his information. And to do this, you guys do this, take away our playoffs on the eve of playoff seedings, the last home game for our seniors and senior nights is just playing pool. Our kids are hurting, our families are hurting, all because their teammates who were already cleared by NCS, one student being cleared September twenty twenty-four and ran track for us must go up against a principal who has a vendetta against the whole program after they are all cleared based on an ongoing misinformed, misplaced discriminatory.
Our next public comment is Ebony Blake.
I don't speak much, but when I do, it's because it's a reason. I had an opportunity to view a video circulating about Steege School. The condition of the school really broke my heart. Halfway through the video, I couldn't even take it. I had to get up and leave because it left a lasting mark on my memory. The memories that I did have of Steege was when I was a little child growing up, attending the school as a kindergarten. Also, my family attended this school, my mother, my aunts. And everybody was so proud about attending this school. But when I saw the current conditions, I looked at the video and I thought about the children that are at the school now and I thought, how could they be proud about where they're at in the current conditions of the school? We know that they have been housed here at Levania de Jean, but they went from a horrible situation to a situation that is very dissatisfying where they've been pushed to the back of this school, sectioned off, and appear to be in the section where it looks like it's a jail. They don't have adequate equipment to play. They don't have an opportunity to engage with anybody else. The, the bathrooms that they currently have are hard for the, the younger ones to really utilize. And they are close to homeless encampments. And it's just dissatisfying to me to know that the district has not done anything. And I don't know if you have a say-so about doing anything, but I want to know what's next. We want to know what's next. Please do something about that.
Our next public comment is Shanae Vaughn. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening, School Board, Trustee Smith Folds, Dr. Hurst. I am highly disappointed in Cabinet. I, my expectation is for the Board to hold Cabinet accountable for the things that are happening, happening at Steege Elementary and throughout the district. Our classified staff at Steege work so hard. They work double duty, out of class. And they can't even get their time cards paid. It's, it's, it's an embarrassment and it's disgusting to know that you have people working in these type of conditions. Lack of restrooms, safety, nowhere to store their lunch, nowhere to store their medication, not getting paid on time. Getting the runaround from everybody that I reach out to, everybody's pointing fingers and nobody's held accountable. I, I, I had so much faith when I reached out to Dr. Hurst. You told me that you were working on it and that you were meeting with, you were having a meeting, then there was a legal situation and nothing has been resolved. So I am asking the School Board to start holding Cabinet accountable. Everyone over there sitting to the right accountable. Contractors and classrooms, over, overstuffed in classrooms, I'm getting. Time cards not being paid throughout the district in every single department. I am so bombarded with complaints, I, I can't even represent my other units because all my time is focused here. So I need something to happen. I need some things to change.
Our next public comment is Leah MacIntosh.
Good evening. My name is Leah MacIntosh. I'm a resident of Richmond. I was born here in nineteen fifty-four. My family moved here in nineteen forty-two. My brother attended Elser, I'm sorry, Elserito High School and graduated in nineteen fifty-two. He also attended Steege School. We have the same elementary school teachers. Our kindergarten teachers was the same. I graduated in from Elserito in nineteen seventy-two. I've served this community in numerous capacities with the public library, as a commissioner, a volunteer throughout the district with adult education. And I'm now retired. I'm just new to knowing the atrocities that have been able to transpire at Steege Elementary School. Everybody in this room should be ashamed of themselves, completely and unadulterately ashamed of themselves. I attended Steege and when I was going there, we had a kiln and a stone where you could do pottery. We had music teachers. We had pianos in every classroom. We sang. We had science. We went on field trips. We were one of the model traffic schools in the whole district. We said, "Steege School, Steege School, we know what the golden rules are." You have completely disregarded the efforts and the history of that school. And again, I urge you, I'm new to the problem. I don't know all the problems. But I encourage you to get off your butts and do something. There's money and you need to use it and put it in the right way. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Rochelle Morrissey. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening. My name is Rochelle Morrissey. I'm the parent of two children at West County Mandarin School. I'm here to speak about the ongoing issues with the change that the district made this August to the Verkata process to approve parent volunteers. I have been emailing Dr. Hurst and the School Board members since September, hoping that this could be resolved by now, but it still has not been. hoping that this could be resolved by now, but it still has not been. Many parents, including myself, did not receive our notification from our Vercata application for weeks until we received a rejection email that had one simple sentence with no reason for the rejection and no email or phone number with which to follow up. I was encouraged to finally this week have Assistant Superintendent Summer Sigler reach out. And although I was discouraged to hear from her that the district did not still realize that there are ongoing issues, in just the last two days, many parents from our school have been emailing and finally been able to in contact, get in contact with Edgar Medina and other staff with the District Office of Community Engagement. And they found that just from our school alone, many of the applications were incorrectly paused and many of the photos, including ID.
Our next public comment is Ligia Ramirez. Ligia Ramirez. Our next public comment is Diana Casada.
Buenas noches, buenas tardes. Me quiero presentar, mi nombre es Antonio.
The next person is Diana Casada. Is that Diana Casada?
Okay, buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Antonio. Y se me concedió el honor de hablar en nombre de la mayoría de los padres de familia de la escuela Luther King, a donde mi hija está asistiendo. Mi más sincero agradecimiento a los padres de familia aquí presentes, a los maestros, a las personas que trabajan en el plantel escolar, a la mesa directiva, y especialmente al doctor Cannon Hurst, que es el encargado de la misma. La presente es para volver a informarles el descontento que tenemos la mayoría de los padres de familia hacia el distrito por su falta de capacidad e incompetencia para resolver los problemas que una y otra vez se les han informado y de la cual no han hecho caso o mismo. Yo soy un padre de familia que recientemente cambié a mi hija a esta escuela y he asistido a todas las juntas a las cuales se me ha llamado a participar. Y en cada una de estas juntas he notado las quejas y las inconformidades de cada uno de los padres de familia. Esta es una queja formal para esta mesa directiva. Yo no sé si esta mesa directiva sea nueva o ya tenga tiempo siendo, trabajando en este distrito. Pero se nos ha informado que ya son muchas las quejas que se les ha dado a la mesa directiva y que por su falta de compromiso para resolver estos problemas que apronta la escuela por la inseguridad, nuestros niños pueden llegar a padecer un trauma. Se nos ha informado a nosotros y al distrito de robos a maestros por parte de personas sin hogar. Y no solo eso. Estas personas sin hogar han hecho de este plantel su hogar ya que por las noches ellos entran a lavar su ropa, entran a bañarse y duermen en los baños. También lo personal, no me gustaría que un día la policía me llamara para asistir a un hospital porque mi hija fue.
Muchas gracias. Si, podría esperar un minuto? Van a traducir porque no pudimos escuchar su discurso. Entonces una de las señoritas van a venir a pedirle su discurso. Se lo podría dar a la señorita, por favor.
Hold on. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm sorry. I think there was a problem with the headset, the main headset. So I have it here. I'm gonna say it very quickly. If you don't mind, I will repeat it in English so that everybody could hear it. So, good evening. I want to introduce myself. My name is Antonio. I have the honor to talk on behalf of the Martin Luther King families where my daughter attends school. I want to show my sincere gratitude to all the teachers, staff, people that work in this school campus, the school board members also, and Dr. Hurst. I'm here to inform you of our discontent that most of our families are having towards the school district due to the incompetence in resolving the problems that we have been informing you and you are ignoring. I'm a parent who recently enrolled my daughter in this school and I have been attending all the meetings that I have been invited to participate. In all those meetings, I have heard complaints and disagreements of the families. They say you have been informed about them and your lack of commitment to solve these problems is showing. I don't know if this is a newborn meeting, but if these problems don't get solved, our children could suffer the consequences and even be traumatized. We have been informed of teachers who are being robbed by homeless people. Not only that, these people get inside the school during the nights to wash their clothes, to clean themselves up, and to sleep inside the restrooms. Me personally, I wouldn't like to receive a phone call from the police department telling me that my daughter was abused sexually by a homeless person who was in one of these bathrooms. We prefer to be here at this meeting rather than in the police department. So we are here to ask you to be responsible and take action. We don't want to sue the district for your lack of commitment, for your incompetence, and your lack of responsibility. I emphasize this message to Dr. Hurst because he's in charge of this district. We have several complaints and petitions to make. We ask that all the locks of the doors be fixed. So if somebody, a stranger to the district, tries to enter the school campus at night, the alarm will go off. To install an alarm that detects movement when the school is closed. Number three, to install cameras around the school campus near windows and parking to monitor the school. To hire a security company that takes walks around the school campus and monitors the school campus when there are no children nor staff. On a final note, I would like to tell you on behalf of each one of the families here present, it's better to prevent instead of later lamenting. We believe and trust that you will do something about this and find a solution. Please inform us of the measures that you are going to take. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Sonia Orellana. Our next public comment is Marina Huerta.
Buenas noches a la junta directiva. Bueno, yo soy madre de una niña de la escuela Martin Luther King Jr. Y es la misma preocupación que mis compañeros aquí presentes. Ha habido bastantes casos en los que mi misma niña me ha dicho que han visto cómo se vuelan los alambrados de la escuela y eso es preocupante porque nosotros no sabemos qué tipo de personas están entrando ahí. Pueden ser abusados o pueden ser maltratados y la escuela no tiene cámaras, no tiene seguridad en las puertas. Pedimos que, que les pongan cambios de chapas, seguridad a todas las puertas, ventanas. O no sé qué pudieran hacer ustedes, pero es preocupante lo que está pasando en la escuela Martin Luther King. Creo que eso es todo de mi parte y muchas gracias por escucharnos. Espero y nos den una pronta respuesta. Gracias.
Our next public comment is Anthony Carl.
Sorry, one second. She's gonna translate.
Okay, so she's saying the same thing as the other person. In particular, her daughter saw some people that were jumping the fence. So she's also asking the same demands, more security. They don't feel safe and more alarms, change of locks, so that the children are also protected.
Our next public comment is Anthony Carl. Our next public comment is Don Gosny.
Good evening. You know, it wasn't that long ago that the $9.8 million per year Measure T parcel tax was passed. Measure T was touted to fund 39 counselors, school psychologists, and special ed teachers, 37 librarians, 2,600 student athletes, and to keep our K3 through 3 class size averages below 24 to 1. As a parcel tax, it requires two-thirds majority for passage, a tough task even when the public trusts the district. With little trust in the district, it's almost insurmountable. The tax went into effect on July 1st, 2019, and will expire on June 30th, 2027. Because of how property taxes are collected, it would have to be passed for renewal prior to property taxes being set mid-summer of 2026. Please keep in mind that you're supposed to prepare your three-year budgets, so it begs the question, where do you think you're gonna get the money for all this when the parcel tax ceases? Common sense would dictate that you pass a renewal parcel tax well in advance of that period, which also says that placing it on the presidential year ballot like we had yesterday would have been the prudent move. I looked though and couldn't find it on my ballot. Our next major election won't be until the primary election in June of 2026. Even that may be too late. It costs a major bucks to finance a parcel tax, so where do you think you're gonna get that money? For that matter, where are you gonna get the money to even put it on the ballot? Unlike a bond measure, contractors and labor unions aren't going to see any jobs associated with the parcel tax, so I wouldn't look in their direction for help. I brought this up at least twice before, but we've yet to hear what you're going to do when you have to lay off so many counselors, close most of the libraries, and kill the athletic programs. On another matter, the district's dissemination of information with the general public and with the media about Stige and your plans for fixing this problem have been abysmal. The Stige community deserves more than just a patch job. They deserve a new school. And please don't pull all your faith in expecting a bailout from the state. The most logical option is to downscope Kennedy and Richmond High by 7% and use those funds to supplement the quickly diminishing funds budgeted for Stige.
Our next public comment is Ashley Johnson.
Hi, my name is Ashley Johnson. I am speaking on behalf of Stige Elementary School as a concerned parent. Basically, they just went from one bad situation to the next. Just knowing about all the different things that did happen at the previous site was very concerning for me as a parent. It made me very sad just to know that my child was even experiencing these things. And just concern for all the other parents and kids that had to be involved in that. And now they're in a situation where it just seems like they're trapped. There's just so many other different things as far as the other parents said, like the bathrooms and the security and not being able to have an actual place to play. I feel like they deserve this at this point. This is, they, they just deserve just a better school. They deserve to be in a better environment. They deserve to have everything that is offered to them that they need. And at this point, they should have it. They should have it. They need it. And you guys need to do something about that because us as parents, you know, this is, this is what we want for our kids. As a community, this is what we want. And they need that. So give it to them. Thank you.
And our last public comment is Michelle Jackson.
Good evening to the board and members on the executive staff. You've seen me before. I'm Michelle Jackson. I am the Education Chair for the El Cerrito Branch in NAACP. And I am here on behalf of Stige Elementary School. I am an alumni of Stige Elementary School. We started this journey July 28th. And today it is November 6th. We need to hear from the trustees. We need to hear from the board. We are asking the board to deliver some kind of response. We need a firm commitment that Stige Elementary School will be rebuilt. We need to hear that from you. What you do for Stige will be a beacon for this entire school district. What you do to the least of them, you have done it to everybody. So you want a good school district? You want good teachers? You want to change how you're doing business? Build Stige up and let that be the beacon and the response from the administrators of this school district. That's part one. Part two is this facility here that the children are being bused to, it's not adequate. And you know it's not adequate. We have asked for some beautification for our Levanya de Jean campus so that the kids will feel like they're at school. This is a learning environment. They need to have the grassy area approved by the city of Richmond. You can do.
That concludes public comment.
Thank you so much for the public comment. We are now moving to B9 standing reports. We have reports from UTR and Asset. Is UTR on the line or in public? Okay, I don't see UTR and not hearing them. We are now going to Asset. Ms. Harrison, you come in for Asset for him? Zalon. It's your turn. Turn your mic on. Turn your mic on.
All right. Can you hear me now? Okay, thank you. I apologize. And can you, I have a parent online. Her name is Crystal. Oh my God, I left her name over there. It started with a B. You see her on there? Okay, great. So can you promote her? Can you start me over real quick? So she, Crystal, I want to introduce her right quick before she talks. You can start me now, please. Can I start right now? Thank you. Bye, baby. Okay. Crystal is one of our AIPAC parents and I want to share because we've been experiencing a lot of issues with how our AIPAC parents have been treated at the school sites. I know you guys have made some effort to improve that, but it's getting worse. We've had voter oppression. We have principals not put parents on the ballots to be voted for. We have had unclear, you know, of who's voting and why they're voting. We don't know who's voting and who's voted for people. And black parents are not knowing where the meetings are for the school site councils or when APACs are being held. There's still a lot of difficulty at the top part on getting this information to parents so that we can be involved. And I have a lot of parents over five that. And I have a lot of parents over five that has reached out to me in the past two weeks regarding APACs and how they're being ran and how they're not... And also how Black parents are not being able to be on the school site councils and not know when they are meeting. So I would want the board to address that with your principals and make sure that there's equity in how school site councils are being ran and when the meetings are being held and when the APAC meetings are being held and how are you letting parents know about those meetings? Because they're causing a hostile school environment. Some of the principals, the way they're handling this APAC, the way they're handling our APAC and SSCs. So I would like to... I brought one parent, Crystal, to share her experience, and I want to give her some time to share. And I have more parents if you would like to hear. And we did talk to family and community engagement. We did talk to principals. So we're not just coming to y'all first. We did look for other strategies to address this. So can we let Crystal have some time to... Can you promote her as a panelist so she can speak? Okay, Crystal. Say your last name. I'm sorry. Crystal, you there? Hello? Does she know she promoted?
Ms. Crystal Banigan, can you please join as a panelist?
Here we go. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Yes, we can.
Wonderful. Thank you so much, Zalon. My last name is Banigan. It's Crystal Banigan. So good evening, everybody. My name is Crystal Banigan, and I'm a parent of three children in this district, and I'm a very serious community advocate. I'm here tonight to say that there's a major problem in this district. Black students and parents are being ignored. Since I've started engaging with the schools and the district staff, I've witnessed blatant disregard for the concerns of Black parents. I've left messages and sent emails that have not been returned, and I've been to the school events and board meetings. I've talked to folks at district level and been given the runaround so much, I feel like I've completed a marathon. All I've been trying to do is join the SSC and ASAT at my child's school and be a form of help for the district. At community and organizational meetings, I keep hearing the same thing from other parents. The district doesn't hear us. They don't want us to speak the truth. There are too many gatekeepers. Now, we've all seen the data that recently came out, so I don't have to remind you of how the district is failing its Black students and thus Black families. The district APAC didn't even start on time, and we haven't yet seen any allocation for Black students' specific services or an explanation on who is providing these services that obviously aren't helping our students. Dr. Hertz, it's clear that the plight of the people is not your agenda, but we deserve a superintendent that will stand up for students, not just the staff. And as Black parents in this district, we demand a solution, not another excuse. And I am not done. So you will hear from me again. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Crystal. So as you hear, that's one parent. But this is going on at a lot of our sites in different ways, so I would appreciate it if you guys would support your principals in engaging our parents and making sure that we have a procedure that's used district-wide so we're not getting different things going on at different sites. And I did have some more to talk about, but I see my time's almost gone. But I am concerned about our children's test scores with that aspect that came out. So I think parent involvement will really help you all to change some of our district data on how our children are learning. So I encourage you to support us in getting our APACs and getting Black and African-American parents on your school site council so we can recommend supportive services and programs that can help our children read and do math better. Because we're here to partner with y'all, not to fight y'all. So please look at us as partners and not problems. Thank you. I'm complete.
Thank you very much. We're now moving to Agenda Item B10, Agenda Review and Adoption. Board, are there any changes to the agenda? Seeing and hearing none, the agenda is now adopted with unanimous consent. We're now moving to Item B11, Approval of Minutes September 25th, 2024 and October the 1st, 2024. Board, are there any changes? Seeing and hearing none, the minutes are now adopted by unanimous consent. We are now moving to Agenda Item B12. We're now moving to Agenda Item B12. Ms. Nesbit, this is your item.
Hello, I'd like to acknowledge the board. Now therefore be it resolved that the West Contra Costa County Unified School District Board of Education recognizes and acknowledges a significant contribution made by the Californians of Sikh heritage to our state, and by adoption of this resolution seeks to afford all of the residents the opportunity to better understand, recognize, and appreciate the rich history and shared principle of the Sikh Americans, their religion and their tenets of their faith, and the important role that Sikh Americans play in furthering mutual understanding and respect among all peoples.
Thank you very much. Board, do we have a motion?
President, I move that we approve the Sikh American Awareness and Appreciation Month Resolution Number 2425-41.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. Board, do we have any comments? Seeing none, we'll go straight to the vote. Trustee Espinoza Jr., your vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Wilson, your vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Phillips, your vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Reckler, your vote?
Reckler, yes.
Thank you. Clark Gonzalez-Hoy, your vote?
Yes.
Thank you, and I'm a yes. We are now moving to Agenda Item B13. Ms. Nesbit, this is your item, ma'am.
Thank you, President Smith Folds and the board. Now therefore be it resolved that the West Contra Costa County Unified School District Board of Education recognizes November 18th through 22nd, 2024 as American Education Week.
Thank you very much. Board, do we have a motion?
President, I move that we approve Resolution Number 2425-42 in recognition of National Native American Heritage Month, November 2024.
Is there a second?
President, I second.
Thank you very much. Board, are there comments? Seeing none, we'll move straight to the vote. Trustee Espinoza Jr.?
Yes.
Trustee Wilson?
Yes.
Trustee Phillips?
Yes.
Trustee Reckler?
Reckler, yes.
Clark Gonzalez-Hoy?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Thank you very much. We're now moving to Agenda Item B14. Ms. Nesbit, this is your item.
Thank you, President Smith Folds and the board. Now therefore be it resolved that the West Contra Costa County Unified School District Board of Education recognizes the month of November 2024 as National Native American Heritage Month and encourages all educational communities to commemorate this occasion with appropriate instructional activities.
Hi, friend. That was the last one. We go into 14. B14, American Education Week. We already voted on the National Native American Heritage Month. We voted on that one.
My apologies. I read them in the opposite order. I will read this again. Now therefore, as it be resolved, as be it resolved that the West Contra Costa Unified School District Board of Education recognizes November 18th through 20th, 2024 as American Education Week. Thank you. Sorry about that.
That's all right. Board, is there a motion?
President, I move that we approve our Solution Number 2425-543 in recognition of American Education Week, November 18th through the 22nd of 2024.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Board, any comments? Seeing none, we'll move straight to the vote. Trustee Espinoza Jr.?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Wilson?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Phillips?
Yes.
Trustee Reckler?
Reckler, yes.
Clark Gonzalez-Hoy?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Thank you very much. Ms. Nesbit, you did a great job. Thank you. Thank you. We are now moving to consent items. Is there any consent item that a board member would like to pull? Okay, we'll start with Mr. Phillips and work our way... Trustee Phillips, and work our way this way. Trustee Phillips, what item?
B12.
B12?
C12, I'm sorry.
C12, okay. Thank you very much. Mr. Wilson, do you have an item?
Yes, C10, WCC Public Ed Fund, James Morehouse Project, Bayview, and Elsarito High School.
Thank you. Trustee Espinoza Jr., did you have anything?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. Trustee Reckler, do you have anything?
Thank you for asking. I do not.
Thank you. Okay, we are now approving the consent items with Item 10 and 12, which were just mentioned, pulled. All right, we are now moving to Item D, Superintendent's Communication. Dr. Hertz, this is your item.
Thank you so much, ma'am. Can we pull up the presentation, please? Thank you all for your patience. We're just trying to pull up the presentation. Yes. Thank you so much for your patience. We're going to start off with a memoriam. The district would like to take time to recognize the contributions of members of our school community who have passed away. Ms. Gladys Scott was a Special Education Teacher Aid at Portela Middle School from 1975 to her retirement in 2009. Her memorial service is scheduled for Saturday, November 16th, 2024 at 11:00 a.m. at Harmony Mission Baptist Church at 108 17th Street in Richmond. I ask that you all please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you so much. We also have a post-election message. In the wake of a close and hard-fought election, I want to take a moment to reflect on the journey we've been on together as a school district. Elections are a time of passion and conviction where we, as a community, come together to express our values and vision for the future of our students and schools. While there is understandably both excitement and disappointment following the results, I want to remind everyone of the core principles that unite us. We're all here for the success and well-being of our children. To those who are feeling disappointed by the outcome, I want you to know that your voices matter and your dedication to our schools and community has not gone unnoticed. We honor your commitment to making a difference, and your efforts will continue to shape the direction we move in. As a district, we'll continue to listen to every voice, and we're committed to fostering a collaborative environment where everyone's input is valued. We're all on the same team when it comes to ensuring our students thrive. To those celebrating today, congratulations. Your vision and passion have resonated with many, and we look forward to working with you to bring our shared goals to life. However, the work ahead is not just about one victory, but about continuing to build a stronger, more inclusive, and forward-thinking community where every child has an opportunity to succeed. Together, we will continue to lead with integrity, compassion, and a focus on student success. As we move forward, I want to assure all of you, staff, students, families, and community members, that safety, well-being, and support of every individual in our district will remain a top priority. We will continue to work as a united team, valuing differing perspectives and building bridges to move us forward in a way that lifts us all. Thank you for your ongoing commitment to our students of our district. No matter the election outcome, our shared mission remains the same, and that's to provide an excellent education and a supportive, inclusive environment for all. Let's move forward together with respect, hope, and a focus on the future of our students. Thank you. We also want to take this opportunity to recognize two amazing leaders. Summer Sigler, who's our interim Associate Superintendent of K-12 School Operations, and also Catherine Acosta-Berproskas, our interim Associate Superintendent of Teaching and Learning. And I caught Miss Sigler as she was putting food in her mouth, so put that out there. We just want to honor both of you. You know, you've only been in this position for less than five months, if memory serves me correctly, since July. But your impact have been tremendous during this four months. And I wanted to share with you, even though it was a collaborative effort, as I reflect back on the passage of our LCAP and our budget, we know that you two were largely responsible for that. So we wanted to take this opportunity to say thank you. And we know that one of you was getting off the plane, working, and you were working also with the county to make sure that happened. So we just want to share thanks for that as well. But that's just one of many things that you two have done, and you've had positive impact in a number of different ways since you've been in this position. And we wanted to just take the opportunity to say thank you for being a reflective leader and thank you for being a proactive leader and an accountable leader as well. And with that, we ask you two to come up and come forward to be recognized for presentation of flowers. Can we go to our next slide, please? So I want to say, Raina, we tried to get your picture. We did not get your picture in time, but we wanted to recognize our interpreters, those who translate for us. Can we give them a big round of applause, please? If you two can come forward, I would just say that we don't understand really how difficult your jobs are. You actually have to listen to every single word that's said and to translate and interpret that. And we just want to say thank you so much for who you are and for your skill. And we just wanted to lift you up this evening as well and honor you also. Can you please just pause? I know you're working, but we want you to come down. We also have flowers for you. Thank you so much for all that you do also. Did you want to come down? We're gonna all take a picture with everyone that was recognized, including Catherine and Summer. Once again, thank you so much, Summer, Catherine, Raina, and Othelia, for all that you do. We appreciate all of you. Thank you. We also want to say Happy Diwali. Even though this was celebrated October the thirty-first, we wanted to just bring that to everyone's attention. And just share with you, Diwali is India's biggest and most important holiday of the year. And during this five-day festival, celebrants light rows of clay lamps outside their homes to symbolize the victory of light over darkness and knowledge over ignorance. Also, it's celebrated across India, and they've been known to have festivals, fireworks, feast, and prayer. So we just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention. Just say Happy Diwali. Next slide. This was read also by Tasha, but we just also wanted to highlight California Seek American Appreciation and Awareness Month again. And then we have some highlights that we want to share with you from different Halloween festivals throughout our district. And I'll just go through these pictures slowly. You can see a number of trunk-or-treat celebrations. You can see Sheldon here. Uh, West County Mandarin trunk-or-treat. I attended that one. And if we go to the next slide, you'll see others at King Elementary, El Cerrito Middle College. And that says Hercules High, but that's the Hercules Middle School principal there. And then also, you can see at the next slide, Richmond High Celebration, Hams, Deanza High, and you see Sherry from the central office. And then you also see, that's Scooby Doo in the middle, Mr. DeLeon, and Thelma, and Luis, is that it? Daphne, Daphne. Okay, I'm sorry. Thank you. I'm thinking that's another show. And then we wanted to highlight Parents' Partners Conference as well. And that occurred on October twenty-eighth, and I understand that it was a great event for our parents. And then also, we want to highlight that we did have a job fair on November the second. Our Human Resource Department hosted the job fair. They talked to potential candidates. Attendees were able to speak with different departments. They interviewed for roles, and even some were hired also. And then we always love to share our parent advisory committees with our board and with the public, also from our APAC. We also have dates for ASAT. Uh, we have our C A C as well, our Community Advisory Committee for Special Education. Our Dual Language Immersion Parent Advisory Committee. Our District Local Control Accountability Plan Committee. Our Multilingual District Advisory Committee. Our CBOC Dates and Seven-Eleven Committee Date. And that concludes the superintendent presentation. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Hurst. Board, do we have any questions for Dr. Hurst on his report? Trustee Reckler, I see your hand. You're welcome to start three questions, please.
Great, thank you. Dr. Hurst, may you please ensure that I'm on the distribution list for all of the committees? I don't believe I've received anything for the C A C. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, wonderful. Thank you so much, Dr. Hurst. We're gonna now move to the first action item, which is E one, Recommendation for Teacher Consent Authorization. Dr. Johnson, I believe it's your item.
Thank you, Clerk. Thank you, Clerk Gonzalez Hoi. Uh, the teacher consent authorization allows a school district to assign teachers based on their subject matter knowledge.
Thank you so much. Staff, do we have any public comment on this item?
We have no public comment.
Thank you, Board. Do we have any questions on this item? Okay. Um, make a motion that we approve, excuse me, the teacher consent authorizations. Can I get a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you so much. And now, uh, do we have any comments? Okay, we're gonna move to a vote. We'll start with Trustee Espinoza Junior?
Yes.
Trustee Wilson?
Yes.
Uh, Trustee Reckler?
Reckler, yes.
Thank you. And I'm a yes, uh, with two, uh, board members who stepped away from the dais for a minute. Thank you so much. Now we're gonna move to item E two, recommended, recommendations for variable term waivers. Dr. Johnson, I believe it's your item.
Yes, thank you, Clerk Gonzalez Hoi. Similar to the teacher consent authorization, the variable term waivers authorize the school district to assign teachers based on their subject matter knowledge.
Okay, I apologize. We're gonna go back to the last item, uh, because we did not have, uh, our student trustees get to vote, but we, um, unfortunately, their vote does not legally count. So we need to have three, uh, elected board members. Um, so we have to redo the vote, uh, because we uh, had trustees absent for the bathroom. So, um, uh, E one, uh, I'll remake the motion that we approve the teacher consent authorizations.
Where's, okay. Oh, Trustee Reckler's here, so we can do it. Okay. And then, um, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any com, did we do public comment? Okay. Any comments from the board? Seeing none, we'll go straight to the vote. Trustee Espinoza Junior, your vote, sir?
Yes.
Trustee Wilson, your vote?
Yes.
Trustee Reckler, your vote?
Reckler, yes.
Clerk Gonzalez Hoi, your vote?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Thank you so very much. Uh, Clerk Gonzalez Hoi, we were on E two, and we were for the vote?
Yes, uh, we were doing, we were about to go into public comment.
Public comment. Okay. Do we have any public comment for E two, recommendation for variable term waivers?
We have no public comment.
Okay, Board, is there a motion?
President, I'll make a motion that we approve the variable term waivers.
Thank you. Is there a second? I'll second. And now we are moving to any questions? Sorry, any comments? Seeing none? All right, we'll go straight to the vote. Trustee Espinoza Junior, your vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Wilson, your vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Phillips, your vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Reckler, your vote?
Reckler, yes.
Thank you, Trustee, sorry, Trustee Clerk Gonzalez Hoi, your vote?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. We are now moving to E three. Uh, Ms., uh, Teacher Payne, this is your item. It's the bond, bond twenty-ten, measure D, twenty-twelve, measure E, twenty-twenty, measure R, performance and financial audit for year end, year ending in June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three.
Good evening, um, trustees, uh, superintendent, and community. Tonight, we are bringing this item forward and asking the board to receive the bond performance and bond financial audit for the fiscal year ending in twenty-twenty-three. Uh, these draft audit reports were presented to the CBOC in April, and after they were presented by the auditors, we did provide a period for additional comments or revisions before the reports were made final. We didn't receive any written recommendations, um, or questions during that period. And so we are now bringing those finalized reports forward to the board and asking you to receive those reports tonight. There are two in nature. The first is the bond financial audit, which was performed by Christie White. Um, there is one finding in that report, and that was that a check was issued with the wrong remit. So the check was reissued with the correct remit, but we did not void the first check in time. And so it created a duplicate entry. Um, but there was, um, it has been resolved. There has been training associated with it. Um, the second audit tonight is the bond performance audit, which was completed by Idy Bailey. Um, no findings in this report tonight. And so, um, I'm happy to answer any questions. I will say that traditionally, this is an item that should come to the board, this is an item that should come to the board much earlier in the calendar year. Um, and so I apologize that it is coming late, um, but it does reflect the reports and was reviewed with the CBOC.
Thank you very much. Do we have any public comment?
Yes, we do. Our first public comment is Alamo Brown.
Yes, thank you, Board. Um, in regards to measure R, uh, with the funds that's there from the bond, we're definitely asking again that whatever monies is remaining, that it remains in the Steege coffers so that we can get the rebuild done. Uh, I don't know how much time it's going to take for this to happen, but as the community, we're asking that those monies be appropriated in the correct manner. Thank you so much.
Our next public comment is Michelle Jackson.
Funds are very important to the lifeline of a district. We were happy to hear about the one that passed last night. But we're speaking tonight for measure R and those funds that perhaps are still there. When we talk about rebuilding Steege, the next statement is where the money is gonna come from. Our community, when we talked about bonds, we have gone around to all of the neighborhood coordinating councils, and they tell us, why should we do this? Because the school district gets the money, but they put it somewhere else. This is like taxation with no representation. You have an opportunity now to use bond money from measure R and the proposition that passed yesterday.
Please conclude your comment. That concludes public comment.
Thank you very much. Board, do we have questions? I'll start with Trustee Phillips and work our way around. Trustee Reckler, I saw your hand. Trustee Phillips, go ahead.
Excluding the money that is in measure R, how much funds are left total?
And staff, before you answer, I'm sorry, Board, we're doing three questions, too many comments. Go ahead, staff.
So I don't have that number off the top of my head. Um, but I could provide a Friday memo with that detail using our most recent financial reports.
The board wants you to do the vote to reallocate remaining funds that are not tied to Richmond or Kennedy to Steege.
Yes, so the board approves all project budgets for bond.
Chose to hold a vote on reallocating remaining funds that are not tied to Richmond, to Steege, or a contract that's let, right? How many votes would it take for the board to pass? That, for example, would it require just a simple majority? Would it require four people? What would it require?
So typically, the item that would come before the board, we call it the site budget authorization form because it identifies all of the board-approved project budgets within the bond fund for which there are a variety of resources. And so it would require a simple majority approval to increase or decrease a project budget as approved by the board.
Thank you so much. That's three. Trustee Wilson, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Thank you. Trustee Espinoza Junior?
No questions, ma'am.
Thank you. Trustee Reckler, I see your hand. Go ahead. Three questions, two minute comments. Go ahead.
Thank you. So it's my understanding that uh, this came to the CBOC in April, but the board didn't get it until November, November sixth, and I think it was due at the end of March. So I'm curious as to what the delay was and why it might not have been able to have been agendized during the CBOC meeting in September, which would have at least saved a couple of months?
Thank you for your question. So I stepped into this acting role in August. So I can't speak to what happened prior to August. But what I would like to share is since I've stepped into this acting role, I've been trying to ensure that we are bringing forward all of the items that need to come before the board as quickly as possible, and I do apologize for the delay.
You know, actually, that wasn't even yours to answer. Can I ask the agenda setting team what might have happened there?
Trustee Reckler, we found out an agenda setting last week. How about this item?
That could be the answer, yeah.
We can't give you any more information.
Okay, thank you. And then, uh, where are we on Moss Adams? And the FAI implementation for Ensign Accounting Investigation Implementations?
So another excellent question. Um, I can provide a brief update and a Friday memo. Um, or at the request of the board, happy to provide a broader presentation. But I, I don't have that off the top of my head tonight to share.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy, any questions? Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I wanted to just follow up on what trustee Phillips was asking, um, about the remaining funds. I thought it was my understanding that part of what we allocated to Steege, the forty-something million, came out of what was left over of measure D. Um, is that not correct?
So it's a great question. So we essentially have three different resources within our bond program. We have the remaining measure D, twenty-ten dollars. We have the remaining, um, measure E, twenty-twelve dollars, and then we have the measure R dollars. And so the D and E dollars are assigned to the critical needs projects that are currently underway. So some examples of those projects include the Lake Campus Replacement Project, the Hercules High School and Middle School, um, science building project, the Shannon Critical Needs Multipurpose Room Project. Um, the measure R dollars, um, have been assigned to, there was the Kennedy Fields Project, which was ahead of the modernization and then the two modernization projects. When the recommendation came before the board in November of twenty twenty-three about increasing Steege's critical needs project budget, which I believe was two-point-nine million to forty-three million, what we did was we used another resource, and we call it our non-bond resource. It's ninety-seven ninety. And the dollars in that resource are the dollars that have come from the state. So along the lines of the conversation of Prop two and the state facility dollars that we've leveraged, we've used our local dollars to apply aggressively for additional funds from the state to make every local dollar go further. A good example that's just off the top of my head for that is the Pinole Valley High School application for state funds came in over twenty-three million. So as we receive dollars from the state based on new construction, modernization, CTE, seismic, whatever grant opportunities out there, those dollars go into a specific resource where we need to use those dollars for capital facilities because we used bond dollars to leverage those state dollars. So the budget assigned to Steege that increased from the two-point-nine to the forty-three is using the non-bond measure resource within the bond fund, which are those state dollars. And the reason why I say that it's critical that I think we bring the most up-to-date information is because financial information changes daily. There are transactions that happen all of the time. We've recently completed a number of critical needs projects like at Collins and at Camren. So throughout our implementation of the bond program and definitely going back to twenty sixteen, we've used the site budget authorization form to identify the board-approved project, that, excuse me, the board-approved project budgets. And whenever there have been project savings, then we've come before the board to say, here are the remaining dollars. We have implemented the scope of work that was approved by the board for these dollars. And we are recommending to the board, and typically what we've always recommended is that those project budget savings are returned to fund balance, the bond fund balance, so that they could be used for another project. So part of what I'm hearing tonight, and to provide a complete response to the questions I'm hearing, it sounds like we need to bring the most up-to-date data to the board so that we can best address the answer, the, excuse me, the questions that I'm hearing. Because it's, it's a little nuanced when you look at different measures. Um, we, we talk about the bond fund as kind of this overall bond fund, but it does have those four different resources. And even in looking at the audit reports, you'll see they identify this is measure D, this is measure E, this is measure R, and then they have a brief accounting of that non-bond resource where they identify where those dollars have come from.
Thank you. President Smith, I'm done.
Thank you so very much. We are now moving to a motion. Do we have a motion? I'm sorry, trustee Phillips, go ahead.
I move that the board, uh, accepts or receives the bond performance and financial audit for year ended June thirty, twenty twenty-three.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any comments? All right, seeing comments, can we put a two-minute clock on the on the TV? Thank you. Trustee Phillips, go ahead.
So I'm gonna start by addressing Kennedy and Steege. I do not support reducing the amount of money allocated for Kennedy or Steege. I think that it is a travesty that every comprehensive high school in this district, uh, was rebuilt, except the two high schools in the hood. And I don't wanna be a part of changing that. That is my position. Um, and I understand that some people are not gonna like that, but I, I do stand on that. But I do think that we need to have a conversation about reallocating funds from other schools to Steege, which is why I asked the question about what the remaining balances are. Uh, Ms. Payne is correct. Uh, we have had conversation in the past about what happens to the savings. I remember there were savings at Richmond at one point, and I advocated that Richmond got to keep its savings. But it went back into the kitty. Um, monies that are going back into the kitty, um, I think all of those monies um, should go towards Steege. Um, projects that have not started, uh, at this time, unless, um, those facilities are worse than Steege, which I highly doubt, that money needed to be reallocated to Steege as well. Now, I don't know how much money that comes out to, which is why I was asking the questions in the beginning. But I think that's the start of a conversation. Um, and I think by doing that, um, I hope by doing that, we can start piecing together money to actually get the school rebuilt, uh, because the district told the people of Richmond that Keats, Steege, Kennedy, and Richmond would be rebuilt if we pass that bond. And I hope that the district wasn't lying. Again, I'm done. Thank you.
Trustee Reckler, can you see the clock?
Yes, I can.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. This will be short, so I don't want this to be taken the wrong way anymore. I mean, at all, I think that the facilities team does an amazing job, and I think that they're very responsible with the projects that they build and the way money is handled, and I really do think they do an exceptional job. But where I do have a growing concern is over the board's oversight and, uh, the CBOC's oversight, which has been a growing concern of mine for a little while, in that it's our responsibility to be reviewing audits on time or as close to on time as possible. There's statutory limitations to when those come forward, and I'd like to see us stick to those. And, uh, you know, if the CBOC got it in, in April, you know, and we're getting it in November, that just, that is just way too much time for those things to, to be sitting around. So I'd like us to be more uh, um, in tune with the deadlines and the responsibilities around managing these funds. It's over two billion dollars. It's not a small amount of money. It's a large responsibility, and I wanna be true to accountability and oversight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? Seeing none, we will go straight to the vote. Trustee Wilson, your vote, sir?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Phillips, your vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Reckler, your vote?
Reckler, yes.
Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy, your vote?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Thank you so much, Teacher Payne. We are now moving to agenda item E five, non-bond change order. Administration Building Basement Mitigation Services. Teacher Payne, this is your item.
I believe we skipped E four.
We absolutely did. Um, so sorry about that. Let's go back to E four, resolution number two-four-two-five dash forty. Go ahead, Teacher Payne, this is your item.
Good evening. Uh, tonight, we're asking the board to adopt the resolution determining that the Greece, the green schoolyard projects are exempt from the CEQA California Environmental Quality Act and giving us direction to file the notice of exemption with the county. So a little bit of information about our green schoolyard, green schoolyard projects, I apologize. Uh, there's a number of beautiful gardens that are popping up along our district. Um, some of the intent of these overall programs is to create additional green space, um, at different sites, and a number of the dollars supporting these projects um, are grant dollars that have come in. So there's a number of different providers that are supporting these projects. But anytime we make a modification to our facility, we have to be really mindful of all of the process and requirements associated with those modifications. And so while it seems simple to plant a tree and a wonderful thing to do, um, we also have to ensure that we're doing the proper filings. So we've evaluated all of these projects, and based on the scope of the project, we believe that based on particular statute, they meet the class one and class four categorical exemptions. So with the board's approval tonight, um, we will move forward with, um, submitting this to the county to file the notice of exemption for the green yard projects identified here that are at nine different sites throughout our district.
Thank you so very much. Do we have any public comment?
We have no public comment.
Thank you. Board, do you have any questions? Trustee Reckler, go ahead. Three questions?
Thank you. So it, it costs four-hundred-and-fifty dollars in total to, to do the filings, or is it four-hundred-and-fifty per site?
So the filing fee for a notice of exemption is fifty dollars. And so I am hoping to submit one for all nine projects, and that's how it's drafted and brought before you tonight. But out of an abundance of caution, and if the county were to write back and ask that I file that, file them separately by site, I would need a budget of up to four-hundred-and-fifty dollars. So I'm gonna do my best for fifty, but in full transparency, I wanted to be honest, and if it kicks back, we will file nine separate applications.
Okay, great. That sounds really cheap. And then, um, the other question I had is then what's the plan after this? Is this gonna be, do you envision like what happened at Washington at all of these schools? And then, um, different organizations are going to procure the grants, you know, just like, like, similar to, to what happened at Washington?
So Washington is a good example, but it's a slightly complicated example because while this green schoolyard project was taking place, we also had a facilities project there. And they, they, we took advantage of the opportunity of them happening at the same time. Um, so I wanted to just share that additional detail. But a number of these providers have been seeking the grant dollars, and contracts have been coming forward to the board through the contracts proceeds that you've seen. Because in addition to trying to provide greener schoolyards, they're also providing education um, and working with the school site. So there's a lot of different components associated with it. Um, and so each one of these looks different, and it's really based on the provider and the grant that they've, um, been able to secure.
Okay, and so there are grants for these nine schools already?
Yes, so these are all, um, I believe only one of them is just design in the beginning. Um, but the other ones, I believe, are for design and, um, installation.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Uh, trustee Wilson, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm curious if you've seen or heard any positive feedback from the community on these projects.
Absolutely. Thank you so much for the question. Um, these are such feel-good projects. Um, I think they're incredible opportunities to take what is traditionally, um, flatscape, so concrete and asphalt, and turn, um, some of our ground space into outdoor learning environments. I think that, um, connection to nature and the ability to get outside um, creates connections to the food that we eat, um, nature, wellness, fresh air. Um, so these are wonderful projects, um, and we have received some incredible feedback. I've also just seen some amazing pictures of our students and our staff engaging and playing um, while learning. And so maybe one of the things that we can do is partner with the sites to share some of those photos um, and maybe ask for some feedback from the sites, um, what they're hearing, um, on each one of their green schoolyards.
Yeah, that sounds great. Thank you.
Thank you so very much, trustee Wilson. Do we have any other questions? Okay, seeing none, let's go to a motion. Is there a motion?
President Smith, I move resolution number two-four-two-five dash four-zero.
Thank you. Is there a second? I'll second. Any comments? Seeing none, we'll go straight to the vote. Trustee Espinoza Jr.?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Wilson?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Phillips?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Reckler?
Reckler, yes.
Thank you. Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy?
Yes.
Thank you, and I'm a yes. Now we are moving to item E. E five, non-von change order, administration building basement mitigation services. Teacher Payne, this is your item.
Yes, good evening. Thank you. So in an effort for transparency, we have gone beyond board policy and made an agreement that anytime there is a change order to a construction contract that is either $250,000 or exceeds 10% of the original contract value, that instead of placing that item on consent, it would come forward to the board as an action item. And that's why this item is before you tonight. The total value of the change order is $4,800. Um, in the execution of the original contract scope, there was some old cabinetry that needed to be demolished in order to complete the intent of the project, and it was futile to bid the project, or to bid that scope of work to another vendor. And so, uh, we have a change order here for the additional work, um, that was required to complete the scope. And we ask for the board's approval tonight.
Thank you very much. Do we have any public comment?
We have no public comment.
Thank you. Board, any questions? Seeing none, is there a motion? I move the non-von change order administrative building basement mitigation services. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Board, any comments? Trustee Phillips, wait for the clock and then go ahead. Go ahead, sir.
I know that, uh, I'm on my way out of here. So there are some things that I may speak about tonight or in my remaining meetings that I may not see come to fruition as a board member. Uh, but I am a member of the community, so I hope that I will be able to see, uh, those things come to fruition, uh, one day soon. I do think that it's important that we prioritize, um, the spending that we have for capital improvements, whether it's bond money or money that we've leveraged from the state, or whether we've gotten it from somewhere else. I also think that it's important that our staff, um, work in, uh, our administration work or works in facilities that are comfortable and up to date. Um, but that said, um, I think that there should be, and I understand this is a contract that's been let, but I think that there should be a moratorium on all improvements to administrative buildings. Um, for example, downtown, uh, until there is a plan, uh, for Stige that's actually said and shared with the public, uh, and discussed with the public. Um, because I don't think that it makes any sense that we repair spaces for grown people. Um, and we have deteriorating spaces for babies. So I get it, this is a project that's let. Uh, but I would hope that no more projects for grown folks come here um, while I'm on the board or after, until there is an actual plan presented to the public for Stige.
Any other comments? I have a comment. The particular one that you're speaking about now, this is a safety issue, the one that we have here. So what we're doing now is, and Stige is a safety issue also, I'm very clear and aware of that. What we have to do as a board is do it all, and that is a big order to fill. But I appreciate that the current facilities interim is bringing things to us in such a transparent and clear way that when we make these decisions, we are not making them in the dark like it has been done before. So I understand your comment, I understand your concern, also understand that we got a thirty-five minute presentation about this in closed session to give us more information, so we would be able to make an informed decision from this dais about this issue and many issues that come to us. I wanna take a minute to thank you for, Teacher Payne, thank you for bringing the issue to us in closed session to where we could ask those questions and get clarification. Also, thank you for bringing this item to the board. As a governing board, we have to be able to do multiple things at multiple times and not let one thing fall. And I think one of the things that this board is trying to do is to do that with all fidelity. So trustee Phillips, thank you for your comments. You were heard. Teacher Payne, thank you for bringing this forward because of the necessity of it, that we have to take care of it. I am complete. We, any more comments? Seeing none, we'll move to the vote. Trustee Espinoza Jr., your vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Wilson, your vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Phillips, your vote?
I'm staying.
Thank you. Trustee Reckler, your vote?
Reckler, yes.
Thank you. Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy, your vote?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Thank you. We are now moving to item F two, F one was pulled to November twenty, to November twentieth, twenty twenty-four. Thank you, Ms. Catherine, for all the work you did. We will hear that presentation at the next meeting. We are now on F two, the twenty twenty-four financing post insurance and annual bond program presentation. Ms. Payne and Dr. Moses, these are, this is your item, please.
Good evening. Uh, we came before the board on September eleventh, and we talked about three critical things that we needed to do. One of them was the, uh, new money sale for Measure R to fund Kennedy and Richmond High School. Um, and the other were in alignment with the board policy for looking for refunding opportunities, um, to ensure public FISC. Um, really happy tonight to introduce to you, um, Blake Bohm from KNN, who's here to share a full report for you. You're receiving a hard copy of the data and spoiler, uh, spoiler alert, it's, it's wonderful news. So I'll turn it over to him. Thank you.
Thank you.
F one got pulled into November the twentieth, the next board meeting. Yes, sir. Thank you. Sir, go ahead.
Good evening, and thank you. Uh, my name is Blake Beam with KNN Public Finance. We've partnered with West Country Costa Unified for uh, many years now, uh, serving as the district's municipal advisor with the bond program. Um, as Ms. Payne alluded to, uh, we have highlights to share from the recent twenty twenty-four general obligation bond issuance. Um, really excited to share some of these highlights. It, it really did, um, turn out to be a, a successful financing.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Just one second. Okay, uh, give me one second. I'll pull the presentation up so everyone can see that's watching. Thank you.
Thank you. So in it, in addition, I'll, I'll say this, in addition to, uh, highlights from the recent, uh, bond issuance, uh, this presentation will also serve as just an annual, uh, update that we provide to the board, uh, sharing, um, overall, uh, variables and, um, important parameters for the district's bond program as a whole. So this first page looks at the summary of all of the district's bond measures that have been approved, going back to the late nineties. Uh, of those bond measures, the table reflects what amounts were originally authorized and when. Uh, what has been issued from those respective bond measures and what remains. And then the second column from the right reflects the amount of principal outstanding for each measure. And the final column to the right reflects the final repayment date for each of those measures. And as you'll see, the twenty twenty Measure R, uh, being the most recent and active measure, uh, with the recent issuance of 250 million, we'll have 250 million remaining, uh, after this twenty-four bond sale. Uh, there is also remaining authorization from the two thousand and five Measure J authorization that has been placed on hold, and it's been on hold for some time. Uh, recognizing, um, some tax rate constraints associated with that measure, we do anticipate that those remaining authorization, uh, amounts will be accessed in the future, uh, once the tax rates fall below, uh, the required levels. On the next slide, I just to provide, uh, assessed valuation update, uh, the district's, uh, local tax base continues to grow at a steady pace. Um, the most recent year, the district's tax base has grown to, uh, nearly forty-three point two billion, which reflects a four point five five percent increase over the prior year's assessed value. Uh, on the top left table of this slide, it refle, it reflects the average incremental growth rates that the district has seen with the five-year at, uh, five point one six percent, the ten-year at five point seven nine, fifteen-year at four point zero seven, and twenty-year at just over four percent, uh, growth. That's a year-over-year growth trends. With regard to all of the cumulative, um, ones that have been sold, uh, over the years, uh, we always, uh, reflect on the district's statutory bonding capacity. Within California, unified school districts operate under a capacity limit of two point five percent. That statutory limit, uh, can be granted or waived by the State Board of Education. Uh, the district has received, uh, such waiver, the most recent one in January of twenty twenty-one, which increased that statutory limit from two point five percent to four point zero five percent. Uh, that waiver is applicable to all of the remaining authorization under both Measure R and the two thousand and five Measure J, uh, measure. The waiver will be in place through June thirtieth of twenty twenty-eight. Based on that four point five bonding capacity limit, the district has remaining capacity of four hundred and forty-six point nine million dollars, so well in excess of what the remaining bond authorizations are under both Measure R and Measure J. On the next slide, we look towards, um, the tax rates, where the tax rates are at, uh, for all measures on a cumulative basis, uh, and what they're projected to be over the remaining life of each measure's, uh, repayment. Uh, in the current year, twenty-four, twenty-five, the cumulative tax rate is $248.90 per hundred thousand dollars of assessed value. That amount is expected to remain steady, uh, through twenty-three, uh, twenty thirty-three, thirty-four, at which time you're gonna see a notable decrease as the two thousand and two Measure D drops off. In that same time span, you'll also have the two thousand Measure M drop off as well. In that same time period, where there is a significant drop-off in tax rates, that is currently anticipated at the time where Measure J, uh, authorization is anticipated to come back into play and be available for access. And then lastly, in terms of the overall, uh, program, uh, looking at the district's, uh, rating history, the district has, uh, active ratings from three of, uh, uh, the prominent rating agencies, including Moody's, Standard &amp; Poor's, and Fitch. Uh, it currently holds a rating of A one from Moody's, uh, A plus, uh, from Standard &amp; Poor's, and an issuer rating of A plus from Fitch. Uh, all of those are equivalent ratings, um, and do reflect, uh, the district's, uh, strong local tax base and growth, as I've just discussed, as well as some other strengths in terms of established policies, um, and management. Uh, these ratings have helped over the years to draw a large amount of investor demand when going to market with new bond sales. And that has proven to hold true for the most recent bond sale as well. So in the next section of the presentation, I just wanna jump to, um, more specifics on the most recent bond sale itself. Uh, on this slide, we look at a transaction summary as a whole. Um, I mentioned already, uh, the primary driver of the bond sale was the, uh, second tranche of funds accessed from the twenty twenty Measure R authorization, uh, which totaled 250 million. That was comprised largely of tax-exempt, uh, municipal bonds with a small portion of taxable, uh, municipal bonds. In addition to the Measure R, uh, bonds that were sold, uh, the district also issued two series of refunding bonds, uh, which generated taxpayer savings of approximately 11.5 million over the remaining life of those bonds. I'll talk about that refunding in more detail in a couple, uh, in a couple slides. Uh, the combined true interest cost or aggregate borrowing cost of this financing as a whole was just under four percent at three point nine seven, and the transaction successfully closed last week on October thirty-first. The table at the bottom reflects more detail of each of the respective series of bonds that were sold, including their repayment term, their specific, uh, interest rate, um, and repayment ratios, and the par amount of bonds sold. One of the highlights that we wanted to share with the board, uh, was in regards to the investor participation, um, and responsiveness of the marketplace, uh, for the district's bonds. Um, we saw a significant amount of orders on the day of sale, uh, totaling two point one billion, uh, orders for the approximate $350 million worth of bonds available. Uh, came from a wide array of different, uh, accounts, uh, sixty, uh, different accounts. The table to the top right um, looks at the types of accounts and the respective orders that came in. Um, this is what we were anticipating to see in terms of the types of investors that would come, um, based on, uh, market experience. Uh, but I think the one thing that surpassed our expectations is the amount of orders, uh, that came in. Both the new money Measure R bonds and refunding bonds were well oversubscribed, the new money bonds by seven point three percent, and the refunding bonds by two point eight percent. As a result of the significant demand that we saw on day of sale, uh, the financing team was able to further lower the borrowing cost of each respective bonds, um, to save taxpayer dollars and, um, maximize, uh, the, a lower interest cost, uh, over the remaining life of the bonds. Um, and by way of example, um, when we presented the board with a resolution to authorize the financing back in September, uh, the estimated true interest cost or interest rate for the new money bonds was four point three one percent. Upon final pricing, uh, the tax-exempt portion, the majority portion of the Measure R bonds, uh, netted out to four point one eight percent, and as shared earlier, the aggregate borrowing cost of all the bonds at three point nine seven percent, so significantly lower than what was originally estimated and presented to the board back in September. As we, as we look at the district's twenty twenty-four refunding effort, um, you know, this is largely driven by an established board policy, the refunding and restructuring policy that was adopted, uh, back in April of twenty thirteen. It serves, um, for staff and the financing team's efforts, um, as the foremost guiding principle in monitoring the district's bond portfolio for refinancing opportunities and what will and will not be presented to the board as an opportunity to lower the borrowing cost for taxpayers. Uh, this refunding policy, uh, requires us to look at potential refunding transactions on an annual basis. The guidelines that are outlined within this refu, uh, policy include, uh, generating present value savings of at least four percent for both current and advanced refundings. Uh, the refunding should achieve, uh, at a minimum, one million dollars of present value savings and a minimum of a hundred thousand dollars annual savings. The term of the debt should not be extended. The term of the debt should not be extended, and the refundings should be structured to achieve level annual debt service savings and/or level out overall debt service. The refundings may also be utilized to manage tax rate commitments to voters. And so on the next page, we're happy to report that the refunding far surpassed all of those guidelines. Cumulatively, there were $118 million of outstanding bonds that were refinanced that spread across the 2005 Measure J, 2010 Measure D, and 2012 Measure E authorizations, providing economic savings. As mentioned earlier, those savings totaled nearly $11.5 million over the remaining life of the bonds. In present value terms, those savings, so in today's dollars, equals 7.4 million or 6.25% of the refunded par amount. And those are the figures that tie back to the policy guidelines. So this was a very successful refunding, which not only surpassed those guidelines, but set the stage for what hopefully will be long-term savings for taxpayers within the community. The next slide, we focus in on the 2020 Measure R bonds. Again, this is the second tranche of bonds. The Measure R authorization was originally approved for 575 million back in March of 2020. I do want to point out a correction on the first bullet of this slide. It says November 2020, it was actually March of 2020. Since voters approved Measure R, there was the first tranche of funding that was issued back in July of 2021, the Series A bonds for 75 million. The second tranche of 250 million will continue capital improvement projects within the district and largely focused on renovations, modernizations, and improvements at the high schools. The debt for this latest Measure R was structured to stay within the $60 per $100,000 tax rate commitment that was made to voters, and we definitely anticipate that to do so. In fact, only over the next couple of years will it even get close to that. And then the debt has been structured to drop off considerably in order to leave capacity, tax rate capacity for the final issuance, the final $250 million to be sold, which is anticipated, currently anticipated to be roughly in 2026, 27 school year. And that will be a continuation of the capital projects that will be going on and funded from the latest bond sale. On the next slide, per statutory requirements, we bring back to the board all of the final cost of the financing. When the resolution is initially presented to the board for consideration, there are estimates in there. And so these costs reflect the final, the final cost of issuance for each of the series of bonds that were sold. The cumulative cost of these bonds equates to 0.69% of the total par amount of the bonds that were sold. Typically, we see costs range around the 1% or higher levels. So I think through a lot of negotiation and also long-term partnerships, the district was able to generate a lower overall cost with respect to the total bonds that were sold. And then the last slide we wanted to share is just kind of a look ahead in terms of Measure R. As previously mentioned, there is $250 million of bond authorization remaining. I mentioned the next issuance is currently expected to be in 2026, 27, and the district's tax rate of $60 per $100,000 associated with Measure R is, is we're currently under that and we're expected to remain under that through the life of this implementation. There also is 77, nearly $77.6 million of Measure J monies remaining. That measure also has a tax rate maximum of $60 per $100,000. That's its own tax rate cap. The 2005 Measure J currently is tax rate constrained. And as mentioned previously, the anticipated timeframe for the final Measure J series to be sold is expected to be in 2034, 35. To the extent that there continues to be assessed valuation growth that outpaces the conservative projections that we put forth, there could be an opportunity to access it sooner. There are also different structuring strategies that could be considered. However, it has been discussion with staff and with the board in prior years, utilizing those structures of capital appreciation bonds due to the higher cost associated with that type of bond. There has not been an interest to pursue that type of structure in order to accelerate the Measure J financing at this time. And there's probably plenty of other stuff to talk about in terms of the look ahead, but I don't want to get, you know, out over my skis. I think that that really comes at the direction of the board. So these were the highlights that we wanted to share and happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you so very much for the presentation. Do we have any public comment?
We have no public comment.
Thank you so very much. Board, do you have any questions? We'll do three questions. Trustee Phillips, go ahead.
How much did you say is left in J?
77, approximately 77.6 million.
If you don't have an answer to this right now, that's okay. And you probably have thought about it, but if you would like to think about it some more, I would appreciate that too. Is there any creative thing? I don't know what that would be, but is there any creative thing that could be done to access those funds?
There is, and it has been discussed with staff and the board in prior presentations that I've provided. I think the most straightforward is the utilization of capital appreciation bonds. And for those that aren't familiar with that type of bond, it's a bond that has a deferred payment. So you are able to access the bond monies now and not have a payment for X amount of years. The additional cost associated with that type of bond is what's called accretion of interest. If you're not paying principal and interest on a loan, then that interest is going to accumulate on itself, and it's going to have a higher overall cost of borrowing than your more traditional bonds, like we just sold for Measure R and the refunding bonds, which do pay interest and principal over the remain, over the life of that loan. So there are very straightforward guidelines that are provided to California school districts that would consider the use of capital appreciation bonds. That was approved in legislation of AB 182. And so there is a pathway to act, to utilize that tool. But with other bond measure, bond measures for West Contra Costa Unified being accessible, that has not been a consideration to date.
If. And this may be a question for Ms. Payne, probably is a question for Ms. Payne. If the district was to utilize the mechanism that Blake just spoke about and was able to access that 70, plus our proportion of it, plus the money that's already been allocated for Stige, would that not actually give the district all the money it needs to rebuild Stige basically right now?
Absolutely, in simple terms, 100%. And so I think truly our responsibility as staff is to bring all of the information forward to the board so the board can make the best decision. We do have our procurement for Stige that's actually coming in tomorrow because part of what we wanted to do was understand what the true cost of the rebuild was from the market. And so as we have that information, as we look at the current financial status of the other project budgets and different types of savings, and then as we look at additional types of strategies and the costs associated with those strategies, we can bring all of that information forward to the board. But in the simplest terms, yes.
Thank you very much for your three questions. Trustee Ruckler, your hand's up. Excuse me one second, Trustee Ruckler. Anyone else in this? Okay, Trustee Ruckler, go ahead, you have three questions.
Thank you, thank you for the report, wonderful news. Would you be able to explain assessed value to the audience?
Yes, absolutely, and I should have taken a moment to do that during my presentation. Assessed value of property is the amount that you will find on your property tax bill, which coincides typically to the amount that's paid for the property. There is an escalator that's applied over time that the county will look at. It's the greater of, or I should say the lesser of 2% or a lower referenced index amount in times where the economy has lower acceleration or inflation. It's not the market value of property, which is typically much, much higher. Due to Prop 13, that creates what typically is a wide variance between assessed valuation and market value.
And then can you explain how that relates to bonding capacity and to the district's sale of bonds and the ability to sell bonds? And the tax rate, if you want to throw that in too?
Absolutely. Each respective bond measure is presented to voters with a tax rate associated with that measure. And so for Measure R, voters approved a $60 tax rate per $100,000 of assessed value. Accessibility for Measure R, just using that as an example, is limited to stay within that tax rate constraint. And that's what prevents from all of the bonds being sold at once because the capacity may not be there all upfront. You have to grow into it over time. That's how Measure R was originally planned, and that's why the debt is structured in a way that looks to maintain that tax rate pledge. Separate and apart from a tax rate for each individual measure, there is the overall bonding capacity of a district. As mentioned on the slide in the presentation tonight, the statutory amount that's authorized to unified school districts in the state of California is 2.5% of your then-current assessed value. There are pathways to increase that through the State Board of Education, which the district has done currently sitting with a waiver at 4.05% of your current assessed value. As assessed value grows each year and the county releases it roughly in late July, early August of every year, that will reset both the tax rate constraints for each individual measure and the overall bonding capacity limit for all debt outstanding. And that's, that's where assessed values play a huge part into how a bond program is managed and ultimately implemented.
Okay, thank you, I don't have anything else.
Thank you, any other questions? I'm sorry, yes, Trustee Espinoza Jr., you have a question?
Thank you so much. So my question is, can you just explain to me how California district bonds work? They work as to, from a student perspective?
Can you repeat that? I wasn't able to hear clearly.
Sorry. Can you explain how California school district bonds work?
How school district bonds work? Yes, absolutely. So it ties back to the original idea of what's presented to voters. At the end of the day, the community is, is who approves a local school bond measure. If a school is successful in having a bond approved, it authorizes a total dollar amount of bonds that can be sold. What specific projects will be funded? And a tax rate commitment that is made that these bonds will not exceed. Once that authorization is received, then a school district can start planning how it's going to implement and phase in capital improvement projects and draw down those funds incrementally. And so what tonight's presentation represents is a second phase of funding from the 2020 Measure R authorization, accessing of the 575 million that voters approved, accessing $250 million that can then be available to the school district for capital improvement projects. Those bonds are a long-term loan that are repaid by property taxes that are collected at the county level and ultimately then repay investors of these bonds over a period of time. These bonds were sold with a 30-year repayment term, so there'll be property taxes collected over the next 30 years to repay these loans that were just issued for capital projects.
Thank you so much. I also have another question. So given the understanding of how bonds work in simple terms and from listening to the presentation, will there be any chance, possibility that a new measure gets passed in the maybe coming years? And will those bonds be like a focus on like schools such as Richmond, Kennedy, and Stige?
There's all the.
I'd like to jump in there. One of the things that I did for viewers at home, and if you take a look at Slide 2 in your presentation packet, this slide actually provides an overall summary of the district's bond program, which goes all the way back to 1998. That original bond measure is what built the building that we're sitting in today. And so our district has a long history of local support for these general obligation bonds so that we can build facilities. And we have replaced many facilities throughout the district with these dollars. And so whenever we look to an election, typically you see in a presidential election that there are a number of what we call general obligation bonds, like the bonds that you see here that are put forward on the ballot. And just yesterday, there were a number of school districts that went to the voters in their local community with these general obligation bonds, asking for a particular, as he shared, a specific dollar and what those projects will achieve. And so absolutely, there, there is the potential for that in the future. And it's something that is used throughout the state by a number of different districts.
Okay, thank you so much. I just wanted like a clarity because it's a lot to take in all at once, but thank you.
Great questions, thank you.
Thank you so much, Trustee Espinoza Jr. Any more questions? Seeing none, we'll go to comments, two-minute comments. Trustee Phillips, I'll see you, then we'll go to Trustee Ruckler. And then Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy. Trustee Phillips, go ahead.
So first I want to clarify something that I said in my last comment. I said something like, hopefully the district didn't lie again. Sometimes I use the word district and board interchangeably. So sometimes when I'm saying that, I'm actually talking about the board, not necessarily a staff member. When we did Measure R, there was a campaign by elected officials. And elected officials were publicly telling people that they voted for Measure R, including board members, if they voted for Measure R, that Stige was one of the schools that was going to be rebuilt. So I want to make sure that I clarify when I said the district. At that point, I was actually talking about elected officials, including board members. So that's the first thing I want to clarify. The second thing is, I had a member of the CBOC message me and. The second thing is, I had a member of the CBOC message me and say, you could probably guess who it is, but say that he has been asking for the remaining balances of the different measures for some time and that he hasn't gotten it. He says he's been asking for months. So my request is when that information is sent to the board, if that information could be sent to every member of the CBOC as well, because I think they should also have that information. The last thing is, I think, and I, I think we should have a special meeting regarding Stige. And I'm requesting, I can't schedule it on my own. I'm not the president anymore, but I am requesting that we have a special meeting regarding Stige. And that one of the things that we discuss is the remaining balances and whether those are balances that can be allocated to Stige. But in addition to this, the funding mechanism that Blake is talking about now, about how to access that $77 million, because we do have the money to rebuild Stige fully. It's been said in this space. We just have to access it.
Thank you, Trustee Reckler. Go ahead.
Thank you. America stands at a crossroads. Our founders foresaw the risk of authoritarian leaders and built safeguards into the Constitution to protect democracy, dividing power amongst branches of government, ensuring checks on executive authority and upholding the right to protest. These safeguards are now more important and crucial than ever. While the election reflects widespread dissatisfaction with the status quo, we must stay vigilant against amassing unchecked power and punishing those viewed as enemies. It is the duty of all Americans, regardless of party, to defend our core democratic values, the rule of law, fair elections, and civic, civic rights. To the Ed Services team, it is imperative if we do not offer a state seal of civic engagement diploma that we offer it immediately. Future item requests. Again, I am calling for a special meeting to discuss the hiring of a new superintendent. It takes three board members to call this meeting. The last time, I think we fell short. And I'm asking two other board members to join me right now so that we can address this urgent matter. The superintendent submitted his resignation on September 30th, and it is deeply concerning that there has been no full board discussion since. I second a special meeting request for Stige. Additionally, I request that we agendize the following enclosed session. Public employee performance evaluation, Sigler, Acosta, Verproscus, and public employee appointment for Sigler and Acosta Verproscus. Thank you. Good night.
Trustee Reckler, don't go yet. You skipped ahead to end of the night comments. Can you hear me now?
Oh yeah, I hear you.
All right, so
Well, I said it early. I'm done.
All right. Any comments on this item? Trust Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy. Feel free to go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you so much for the presentation. I would love to see some like funny pictures or something because I lost you for like two slides. But I really appreciated it. I agree with Trustee Phillips. I would love to hear more from Ms. Payne and our team about how we can access the 77 million. I would love for us to be able to put that forward as a solution for fully rebuilding Stige. I also know, Ms. Payne, you're working with your team on matching funds with now the future Prop 2 and other ideas. So I would love for us to be able to discuss it in an item. I think a special session is going to be difficult because we have so many meetings in the next few weeks, including two special sessions already scheduled. So I would love to see it as an item in the next few, a couple meetings so that we can just agendize how we're going to be able to fully rebuild Stige. But I really appreciate the, the update. And we heard some really good news. So thank you.
Any other comments? Teacher Payne, what year was Measure R passed?
March of 2020.
Thank you. All right, we are now moving on. Since we were finished with comments, we are now moving on to our pulled consent items. Thank you for your presentation. We are moving to our pulled consent items. The first one was Trustee Phillips, you did Consent Item 12.
I did do 12, but 10 got pulled too. Do you want to keep them in order?
Nah, let's mix it up. So go ahead.
How many vacancies are on the CBOC right now?
Thank you so much for your question. Give me just one second.
I just knew you were going to know right away because you know everything. You're so good.
Well, you know, I want to give you a complete answer. So by statute, the CBOC has five specific categorical positions and two at large. But by board policy, we've expanded statute and we have a total of 11 positions. So with the approval of this item tonight, we will have three vacancies, but we will have a total of eight members. The one categorical position that will be vacant still is the business organization, and we are working on scheduling interviews at this time.
Can a business organization include a church? It's a nonprofit.
So I would want to double check. So the, the statute's really specific for the categorical position, so I would just want to double check without committing to that answer now.
And the two others that are available, so there's one that's business. Hopefully that includes nonprofits. But the other two, are they at large? What are they?
Yeah, so we have five categorical and the remaining six positions are all at large.
I think that's three questions, right?
Yes, that's three.
He counted two. I can't see, I can't see, but I can hear.
He counted two. You did one is the church, is the church. And then the first question you asked was what, how many vacancies do we have? First one's how many vacancies do we have? Second one was the church. The third one, he may be right. Go ahead. You have one more. I can't remember the third one.
Dr. Hearst. Considering all of the issues that have gone on around Stige, I think that it would be highly appropriate if we reached out to the Stige commu- I know this is not what we normally do, but I think it would be highly appropriate if we reached out to the Stige community, preferably parents. But even St. Peter's Church, right? That's why I asked about the church and the nonprofit, and invited them, somebody to sit. Is that something, I'm not directing you to do this, but it makes sense to me that we would invite a member of the Stige community to sit on the CBOC if they wanted to. Is that something that, and I'm putting you on the spot a little bit, but is that something that makes sense to you? It does make sense to me. I thought she was actually going to ask a, a different question. But does that make sense to you, Melissa, as well?
Absolutely. We would love it. What I would say is that our next CBOC meeting is on November 18th. And we have recorded previous CBOC meetings, and so we would love to fill all of the positions and anyone interested in joining can reach out to me directly so that I can provide them with more information and get them in contact with our CBOC chair, as well as point them to resources that are available, like previously recorded meetings. If I could add a quick plug, at our CBOC meetings, we review our project reports, which include photos, details about where we are with the project all the way through design. We offer site visits of our projects while they're going through construction. In fact, there's some site visits happening later this week, and we review the financial reports. So we'll have great answers to the questions that you asked me earlier that I didn't have the answer for. And we'd love it. Please come.
Thank you. That's three.
Thank you.
Any other? Trustee Reckler, you have three questions? Your hands up.
Oh, I'm sorry. I don't have anything.
Any other questions? Trustee Phillips, you want to move the item?
Yeah. And after I move it, I just have one brief comment. But I move that the board appoint Tashiana Johnson to the CBOC.
Is there a second? All second. Sorry. All second. Two-minute comments. Trustee Phillips, wait for the clock. All right, go ahead.
So I love how Ms. Payne tried to make the CBOC sound sexy. I appreciate that. I appreciate it. I do. The second thing is, I want to say to Ms. Johnson, I did not pull this item for discussion because I had any issue. If you're watching, I did not pull this item for discussion because I had any issue whatsoever with your appointment. I wanted to have the conversation around vacancies and getting a member of the Stige community on that CBOC. So it had nothing to do with you. So I do appreciate you volunteering. I thank you for your service. Dr. Hearst, I would appreciate, and I think it makes sense, right, is if there could be messaging specifically for the Stige community that goes from the principal to the families, that goes from you to the larger community in one of your messages. I know that this is site-specific what I'm talking about right now. But there has to be a mechanism for them to know that we are specifically soliciting their service on the CBOC. I think that, you know, where there is a will, there is a way. I think that there have been a lot of issues surrounding Stige, but I do think that there is an opportunity to still do some good things. I think putting somebody on the CBOC, I think having this meeting to access, figure out how to access that 77, I think it could be done. The question is just, do we want to get it done? Thank you.
Any other comments? Seeing none, we are now moving to Mr. Wilson, you pulled Item C10, contracts. You can go ahead and speak to why you pulled it, sir.
Sorry, President. We have to vote on the appointment.
Yes, we do. Thank you. No comments. We're now moving to the vote. Trustee Espinoza Jr., your vote, sir?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Wilson, your vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Phillips, your vote?
Yeah.
Trustee Reckler, your vote?
Reckler, yes.
Thank you. Trustee Gonzalez-Hoy, your vote?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy, your vote?
Yes, thank you.
All right. And I'm a yes. Thank you. That passes. Now we're moving to Trustee Wilson, you pulled a contract. Go ahead and speak to why you pulled it, sir.
Yes, so I pulled this item because I wanted to bring more light to it. I really value the JMP program at El Cerrito High School. I think that it's a great support system where there's counselors, leadership opportunities, and it helps people in the school connect. I think that even the small things, such as getting snacks or ibuprofen, is very helpful for students. And I think that we should expand the JMP across the district and to bring positive change. There is facts that has better attendance, fewer disciplinary issues, stronger sense of community. And I think the board and the district should work closely with the JMP to expand this. So this does lead into a question of what are the steps to expanding the JMP program to other schools in the district?
Thank you for the question. Our schools select the vendors that they'd like to contract with. So I think the first step to expanding this program is ensuring that other school leaders understand its value and that other school leaders consider this program when they are deciding who to contract with for services such as these.
Thank you.
I would add that JMP is a specific center at El Cerrito, but every high school has a health center. And so while it may not look exactly like El Cerrito's, they do have staff that are deciding and using data to determine the services for their students, just like the staff in the JMP does for El Cerrito students.
Mr. Wilson, do you have any more questions?
No further questions.
Thank you. Would you like to move the item?
Yes, I would. I would like to move that we approve WCC Public Ed Fund, James Morehouse Project for Bayview and El Cerrito High School.
Thank you. Is there?
Second.
Thank you. Any comments? Seeing none, we'll go straight to the vote. Trustee Espinoza Jr.?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Wilson?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Phillips?
Yep.
Thank you. Trustee Reckler?
Reckler, yes.
Thank you. Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy?
Yes.
Thank you. And I'm a yes. It is 9:53. If we want to get board comments in, we need to extend the meeting by 2, 4, 6, 8, 10, at a minimum 10 minutes. Is there a motion to extend the meeting by 10 minutes? Trustee Phillips?
I move that we, just because it's easy to do it this way, I move that we extend the meeting to 10:20.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. We'll go straight to the vote. Trustee Espinoza Jr.?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Wilson?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Phillips?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Reckler?
Reckler, yes.
Thank you. Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. We are now in board comments and agenda items, future agenda items. If you have a board comment, pop your little hand up. All right. Trustee Phillips, wait for the clock and go ahead.
So I know this train has already left the station, but when we had this conversation a few years ago, I said I did not support district elections, and I still don't, particularly in this school district setting. I feel like and not that three board members should live in El Cerrito or three board members should live on the same block, but I feel like every school, every neighborhood in this district needs the best that every board member has to offer. And because we are now in these districts, it almost forces you to spend more time than you may have advocating for the schools that are just in your area. Because the truth is, the people who are in your area is the people who put you on the board, right? I think that it has not served this district or the students in it well. And I, I just need to say that Stige is not in the district that I represent. But I do feel the need to speak up about it and for the students who are there. I know other people feel the same way who don't represent that district. My request, because I am leaving the board, is if we don't have a special meeting, that the agenda item actually happens while I am still on the board because I would like very much to speak to that because it is important to me and the community that I represent, regardless of the fact that the districts were put into place. Secondly, I do have a resolution that I will be sending to Mr. Gonzalez-Hoy about the environment, and it is something that I would like to get passed, hopefully while I'm still on the board as well. Thank you.
Any other comments? Go ahead, Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy.
Thank you, President.
Thank you, President. Trustee Phillips, thank you for saying that. We actually have a governance committee coming up. So it's perfect timing so that we can bring it to the December meeting before you end your term. I want to thank you, President, for continuing to show such hospitality to the board and to cabinet. For those that don't know, the President shows up two hours early and decorates the room, brings dinner for everybody present and does it out of her own pocket. Really appreciate that. And I just wanted to talk very briefly about just the work happening at our schools. I know that after last night's elections, there are a lot of people in pain. I really appreciated Dr. Hurst's statement that you sent out. I thought it was like so well-written. Encompassed, I think, a lot of feelings that people were kind of reflecting with today. Our educators, our administrators went to work today trying to reflect through their own feelings. And then on top of that, putting those aside to teach and to be there for their students, some that were struggling with the same feelings of uncertainty and about their future. So I just want to say thank you to them. I want to thank all of our staff who shows up and continues to show up even though sometimes it can be hard. Especially because having to put your feelings aside and then take in the trauma and the feelings of thirty kids of any age or staff or, you know, colleagues can be really difficult. So I want to say thank you to them and just say that I hope the community knows that sometimes there are a lot of challenges, but this board will continue to stand for their safety and for their future, no matter what comes from the federal government. So I want to say thank you to everyone for a good meeting.
Any other comments? Seeing none, the next board meeting will be held at Dejounte on November twentieth, twenty twenty-four. Thank you very much, everyone. We are adjourned.